Work on it lately, but it's still there. Is that where you play basketball?
No, I used to go there as a kid, take the trolley from Somerville over to Thompson Square.
Yeah.
Walk up Green Street.
Yep.
Basketball court is in the girls' club. It's connected to the boys' club by tunnel.
That's right.
Of course, of course, the Melas know all of this stuff.
I'm the monument more times than I can count.
Where was your location, Joe?
Uh, High Street at the corner of Co- Co- Cordis Road. Uh, half a block, not even that, from the monument.
Top of the hill.
Hey, Josh.
Hey.
I have to be careful what I say about that town. I still have relatives there.
Yes. Who's still there?
Michael, his wife, Peter. A couple of nieces. And God knows how many of my, uh, Monty O'Brien's family. We miss husband.
Uh, yeah. How old are you all?
Breathing last I heard.
Okay, guys, um, it's six thirty. We're gonna get on with business here. It's Wednesday, uh, April third. I'll call the, um, Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Um, let's go. Typical announcements I went over and through, and then we'll have some opening comments. Uh, the annual town elections will be Saturday, April twenty seventh. Polls will open from seven AM to eight PM. Last day to register to vote is April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. For more information, visit the town election page at Nahat.org. The annual town meeting this year will be held Saturday, May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, at twelve thirty PM at Nahat Town Hall. Last day to register the vote is May eighth. Warrant, uh, with articles will be posted soon. Dog licenses are due, were due April first. Fines will be assessed starting April fifteenth. Metal, white goods, TV, computer recycling, starting April twenty-seventh through October twenty-sixth. Last Saturday of each month from eight AM to twelve PM. Behind the DPW garage, Nahat resident parking sticker. Required certain fees may apply. Visit Nahat.org for a full list of acceptable, uh, materials. Spring, uh, leaf pickup Mondays, uh, April twenty-ninth, May sixth, May thirteenth, and May twentieth. Bags must be environmental available, um, bags and out of the curb by seven AM. No open barrels, root balls, or branches. Parking stickers, for two thousand twenty-four resident parking stickers are now available for purchase at Nahat.org. Stickers are ten dollars each. All outstanding bills must be paid to the town in excesses completed, um, before purchasing. Scholarships, um, Charles Kelly Scholarship Applications are due back by April twelfth. For applications and more, uh, information about local scholarships, visit the scholarship page at Nahat.org. Local TV channel now being updated on a regular basis with important updates, so tune in to the Comcast Channel Eight and Verizon Channel Forty-five for those, those important updates. Town Hall, uh, intern, we're looking for a town hall intern. Two college-age individuals for a part-time summer internship. Visit the Employment Opportunities page at Nahat.org for full, um, for, full job description. If interested, please send a cover letter and resume, uh, resume to Kate Taylor at Nahat.org. So I encourage everybody, any college student to do that. You never know where it's gonna get you. Tony Valletta, our town administrator was my intern. Sorry, you never know, uh, what, what that could lead to.
So proceed with caution.
So, okay, um, let's see, Nahat, uh, it says, oh, the Nahat, uh, the Nahat Market by the Sea. Saturday will be, this year will be Saturdays on, um, June twenty-second. Is that July twentieth? Yeah, yeah. July twentieth, August seventeenth, and September fourteenth, from ten AM to one PM at Flash Road Park. To become a vendor, visit the market page at Nahat.org for applications. Let's see, finally, um, Operation, um, Operation Troop Support Program, supported by the American Auxiliary Unit Two-Fifteen. This is a town-wide program, which is to help collect donations for items requested by our troops overseas. Donations will be collected throughout April at the fire station, library, town hall, and Johnson Elementary School. Each location will be collecting different types of items. Um, so you can see a flyer. I know, Esther, if you're on, you might want to talk about this program a little. Esther Johnson?
I see her iPhone there. Uh, do you know how to unmute yourself, Esther, or Tony? Are you able to help her?
Try star six. Esther, you can hear me, but if you can try star six to unmute.
No, looking good. Okay, if you can hear us, Esther, um, you can figure that out, unmute yourself, just jump in at any time in, uh, I'll, I'll pause and I'll let you join us. Tony, uh, do you have any information more than what I just said regarding this program?
No, there's a, like, like, as you mentioned, this collection box is, oh, wait a minute.
Esther's hand is up.
Esther, yeah, I'm asking you to, I'm hitting the ask to unmute button. But I can't unmute her on my end.
I didn't see any, um, information in our packet. I did see something on Facebook earlier.
Yeah, there's, uh, let me, I can pull up, while we wait for that, I can pull up the poster that she provided us. Let me share my screen here.
Yeah, hello, could I say something real quick?
Yeah, hold on, George.
Uh, so you, can you see this poster here, the different collection sites throughout town?
Yes.
We could, uh, we can throw this, I, I don't know if it's on our website yet, but if it isn't, we'll add it. Uh, we can also put it on Facebook. But as you can see, the fire station, you can drop off any day, eight through seven o'clock. They're collecting snacks such as protein bars, beef jerky, small containers of nuts, fruit cups, cans, packages of tuna, noodles, gum, cookies, and crackers. The library, uh, is collecting popular paperbacks. Uh, town hall is, uh, mostly toiletries, shampoo, conditioner, sunscreen, body wash. Uh, things of that nature. Johnson Elementary School are collecting athletic socks. Um, and so there's boxes at the entrance of all of these, uh, locations around town. Uh, in, at the town hall, it's right when you walk in the fronts, uh, front door next to the old fire engine.
Is there an NDA to that?
Yeah, I don't.
It said in April.
I'm not sure, Gene.
Uh, just so that people would know.
Well, let's just get a page up on our website, um, Tony. People can take a look at it. We can, we can also put Esther on, uh, our next agenda too. Josh, Jane, um, any opening comments?
Uh, no, I don't have anything.
Could I ask?
Or George, is, is there something that?
Yeah, I just want to let, let you guys know, this, um, meeting's not on in the hot channel. I have channel forty-five on right now, and it's not on.
Okay.
Yeah, we're having some issues with that cable cast box. I'll, I'll see what's going on.
Okay, just want to let you know.
Gene, any comments, opening comments?
Uh, yeah, just one, uh, d- double question. What, whatever happened, Tony, with the bird issue on Short Beach?
I was gonna, I was gonna bring that up. Uh, we did a post, uh, today on Facebook. There was an article in The Globe that's a couple of weeks late, to be honest, uh, uh, reacting to, you know, the birds that were found on, on Nahat Beach. They definitely, they, they tested for positive for a, a type of avian flu. Um, the guidance is the same. Don't interact with the dead birds. Try to keep your pets away from them. They, the risk to humans is low, uh, but the, you know, the risk to your pet is somewhat unknown. They couldn't, uh, they don't have a lot of data about how, um, you know, the avian flu could transfer to, let's say, your dog if they picked up one of those deceased birds. They have seen, um, that the flu has transferred from, uh, in other parts of the country to cattle. Uh, so it's just better to be, uh, you know, better to be safe than sorry. And, and really, unless you're on Doggy Beach, you know, even though you're, even though dogs are allowed on the other beaches, uh, they really are supposed to be leashed. The only, the only public area in town for unleashed dogs is Doggy Beach. But even there, right now, you might consider a long lead on your, on your pet, you know, just to be safe in case there's a, you know, deceased bird uh, in the water or on the sand or, you know, in the, in the dune. Um, and if you come across a dead, a deceased bird, report it to the DPW. You can call seven eight one, five eight one, zero zero two six, or you can email Mary Lowe at M Lowe, L O W E, Nahat.org.
And, and that was the other part of my comment, that there was a, uh, rather exotic-looking bird um, down on Doggy Beach found, found dead. That was reported. And then yesterday, somebody reported finding two owls on Short Beach. So I don't know. I, I didn't have the, the, the owl party did not want to use their name. But I'm just reporting it now.
All right, yeah, call, you know, let, let us know. If you, if you come across something, please call the town hall, call the DPW, let them know. We will dispose of it properly and according to the guidance that we've received from mass wildlife.
Well, I called, I called myself on the one on Doggy Beach. Did we have any findings on that?
No. Uh, we're not, you know, those, they're not gonna be getting tested, uh, likely not gonna be getting tested, um, unless it continues beyond April, is what we were told. You know, there, in the past few years, this flu has kind of come through and it's gone away. Uh, except for a couple of years ago, it went beyond April and kind of lasted all summer. Uh, so they know what it is, mass wildlife, um, they expect it to continue through this month. Uh, so they've told us how to properly dispose of the animals. If it continues after this month, they might do continued testing. But as of right now, just, you know, if you, if you get a call, just let, let me know, or, you know, and then you can let the residents know to call five eight one, oh oh two six. And, uh, we'll get it cleaned up.
Do you know, Tony, if they disposed of that one on Doggy Beach?
I believe they got rid of it, yeah.
Right, thank, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Gene. New business, uh, we have some event requests to approve. Josh, you want to make this motion?
Sure. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following event requests. The joys of nature, animals in the spring program uh, on Tuesday, April sixteenth, from ten thirty AM and eleven thirty AM to twelve PM at the Nahat Town Hall. The Mystic Drums performance on Friday, April twen- uh, excuse me, April nineteenth, starting at ten AM at the Nahat Town Hall. And the Johnson School PTO Annual Field Day on Tuesday, June eleventh, twenty twenty-four, starting at eight AM at Flash Road Park.
Seconded?
Motion made and seconded, um, discussion. So the joys of nature program has two different showtimes. One from, uh, ten thirty AM to eleven AM and one from eleven thirty to twelve PM. So, uh, it, if you need any more information, contact the library. No registration is necessary for any of these events. Any further discussion on the motions? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor?
Gene, cantei.
Okay, Mark, color the eye. Uh, Josh, we have a motion here to, uh, amend the lease between uh, Nahat and the Nahat Preservation Trust. Uh, do you want to take that?
Yes. I move that the Board of Selectmen amend for the second time the lease between the Town of Nahat and Nahat Preservation Trust dated March ninth, two thousand six, by changing the address of the premises from sixty-nine Nahat Road to ninety-six Nahat Road. Do we have a second?
Motion's made and seconded, discussion, uh, Tony or Dan, you wanna?
Sure.
What, let us know what this is about?
Sure, um, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, but this came from, uh, the process that the American Legion's going through to obtain their veteran's liquor license. Uh, it's kind of the last, from what we understand, it's the next and hopefully last hurdle that they are, uh, that they encounter. Uh, but there's, I believe their sublease, uh, their liquor license is ninety, you know, their liquor license application is ninety-six Nahat Road. Their sublease with Nahat Preservation Trust is sixty-nine Nahat Road, and the lease between the Town of Nahat and the Hot Preservation Trust is sixty-nine Nahat Road. So, uh, we have to, we have to make those corrections so that the liquor license and the, and the lease agreements uh, are in agreement. And we should have the right address on the lease.
That's right, that's, that's exactly what it is. It's that simple. It's really nothing more than that.
Okay, okay, uh, mostly administrative then. So I'm glad to see that they, uh, finally have, uh, getting their liquor license and, uh, I know that they've been pushing for this for a long time and, um, it'll make life a lot easier. So, a- any further discussion on this motion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor?
Gene, cantei.
Josh, hands from eye?
Mark color the eye. Uh, um, you have a vote to open and close the, uh, town, annual warrant, uh, Josh?
Uh, I move that the Board of Selectmen execute the warrant for the annual town election to take place on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, from seven AM to eight PM at the Nahat Town Hall, three thirty-four Nahat Road, Nahat, Massachusetts, oh one nine oh eight.
Seconded?
Motion made and seconded, um, discussion. Um, there's a full list of open seats attached, um, to the backup documents. Tony, uh, where, uh, can someone? Is that, uh, is that available online too, that document?
Uh, the, the seats are listed on the town clerk's page on Nahat.org.
Okay, great.
So it's, uh, Selectmen, Moderator, Town Clerk, Assessor, Constable, Public Library Trustee, Planning Board, and School Committee. Those are the, uh, offices in a variety of numbers. Actually, all of them are one seat, except for the School Committee, which is two seats.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
I think Planning Board, I think Planning Board is two seats as well, but there's a candidate for one of them.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, two seats in the Planning Board too.
There's, you know, one, one open, one of the seats that are open on the Planning Board doesn't have a candidate, so it could accept a write-in. School Committee, I think there's two seats that don't have candidates, so could accept write-ins, and there's one on the assessors that could accept a write-in as well.
Hopefully we'll get, uh, candidates for all of these seats. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Gene, cantei.
Josh, hands from eye?
Mark color the eye. That wasn't a vote, uh, to open anything. It was just a vote, uh, to execute the warrant, so we don't need to close it, right? Or do we, Dan? I guess not.
Dan, you were mute, you're muted, Dan. Dan?
Yes, we, the, the vote was open and closed, and, um, and we did both of those things, so I think that's fine.
My motion.
It was actually to execute.
Yeah, right.
What, what I had here, my, my outline was open to close, so, um.
Yeah, I, I think the motion was different than the outline, so.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, I think we're fine. I think we can just, uh, uh, I think we're fine. Do we vote on this?
Yeah, we already voted, right? We did vote.
Okay, good. Okay, uh, we'll move on then. We have a donation, uh, for the Benson family, um, Sally Cooth and family, um, uh, Josh, will you make that motion?
Yes, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the donation of five thousand dollars to the Benson Fund from Sally Caruth and family.
Seconded?
Motion made and seconded, um, uh, discussion, or that's, that's very nice, uh, that was Sally, Sally is, was a Benson, wasn't she, Tony, I think?
She is, uh.
Yes, uh, I think she was my age, actually, yeah.
It was, um, her son passed away in the tragic event earlier this year. And I think she was, uh, sisters with, uh, she was the sister of, um, one of the Bensons.
Yeah, John and Joe, yeah.
John, or both of them, John and Joe.
Both of them, yeah. Okay, great, well, um, she sent the Board of Selectmen a very nice, um, thank you note, and she referenced, um, both the American Legion, uh, for their help and Chief Antrim, uh, and his health in putting this together. Uh, her family is very appreciative, and, uh, we appreciate the donation and, uh, I've hit, I've heard a lot of talk about this around town, and people are excited about this program, so, um, all good things. Any further discussion on this motion?
Yes, just, uh, how great is that for them to be thinking of others? And step up and, and put five thousand dollars into the program.
Very nice.
Yeah. Is there, I, I don't know if Sally's on the call or not. Um, I know Kristen sent her the information in case she wanted to jump on.
Is she?
Sally, if you're on, um, you know, please unmute if you, if you feel comfortable.
And we could send her a, a reply and note.
Right.
Yes, no?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. Kristen already sent her something, you said, Tony, right? But, um, it would be nice to send her, um, handwritten card. It was, uh, you know, beautiful letter she wrote, and, uh,
Yeah.
Obviously, our heart goes out for her loss, so.
Yeah. Okay, any further discussion on this motion? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor?
Gene, cantei.
Josh, hands from eye?
Mark color the eye. Ongoing business, um, the Housing Subcommittee updated on the Housing Production Plan. Uh, do Michelle, uh, Tony, is Michelle on? Does she want to give us an update on this?
I'm here, Mark, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So the housing production-
Do you want to identify yourself?
Oh, sure. Michelle Capano, twenty-nine Ocean Street, Chair of the Housing Production Plan Advisory Subcommittee. Um, the Subcommittee is pleased that we have completed the next version of the plan, which is now, then, will be available on Friday to the Nahat community. We are meeting tomorrow to walk through the red line changes and edits. Um, just to go over what our schedule is, we are meeting tomorrow night at six thirty. We invite the public to attend and listen in on, uh, the changes that were made to the plan. There'll be a two-week comment, public comment period that will start April fifth and run through April nineteenth. Afterwards, the committee will record the citizens' feedback. And then during the week of April twenty-second, we were looking to schedule a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board to vote to adopt the plan and send it to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I wanted to highlight, um, just a couple of things to, for folks to understand, you know, how we got to where we are today. So back in November, we had completed a draft plan, and we provided it to the Board of Selectmen in the Planning Board. At that time, um, we released it to the public, and we started to see a lot of feedback come in from the public. And it, uh, gave us an opportunity to probably take, uh, some time to review some of this feedback that was coming in and, uh, look at some of the recommendations and changes that people were suggesting for the plan. We catalogued and recorded all of that feedback. Some of that feedback required, required some research and review, and we provided responses back to the citizens that, uh, submitted feedback. From there, we took that feedback and we organized it, and we started working through, uh, the changes into the document. Um, unfortunately, there was a, a death on the committee, and we had to take a little bit of a reprieve from the work that we were doing, and we restarted our activities back in January. Uh, by that time, we had also exhausted our funding and timeline on the first set of this project with MAPC. So we had to work through a contract extension with them as well. Um, during that time, we continued to receive citizens' feedback, so we continued to record that feedback and, uh, review that feedback and integrate what we could into the plan. Um, what we will publish on Friday will be a red line copy of the draft, as well as, uh, what I look at is a, a final document. Um, our hope is that during this next two to three-week period, um, we will record the citizens' feedback, and we will, you know, certainly, uh, consider anything if we think is substantive to make changes. Um, but our hope is, you know, we are prepared to have a, a final document that we, as a community, can send. Um, stop there and see if there's any questions from the board.
Um, yeah, it, it sounds like a good, uh, timeline, Michelle. Uh, you know, I, I think it was, it was very helpful, um, that we stepped back a little on this whole process and really went through a extremely thorough citizen's participation, um, that was really outside the original scope of, uh, what we were uh, planning, uh, but I think we got a lot of good comments. Uh, I think that, uh, between the committee and, and our consultants, MAPC, uh, uh, we addressed, um, just about all of the co- comments that were given to us, and I'm, I'm sure that everybody won't be happy one hundred percent, but I think we're getting pretty close to, um, uh, a document that, uh, has really been comprehensive and has, um, respected and taken in all of the views of the, of, of, of the community, so. Uh, like, like you said, I, you know, I, I do see this as pretty much the final, uh, draft. We will, uh, if there are some last-minute comments, we can, we'll, we'll file them, uh. As you said, if they're substantive, uh, we'll, we'll address them. Um, but the next step will be for, uh, the, the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board to meet.
Thanks, Mark, and certainly we welcome citizens' feedbacks. So, once the documents are published on Friday, um, they can certainly email us, and we will have, um, a release and more information. And more information on the hot dog award on Friday.
Uh Josh or Jean?
No, just a a hearty thank you to Michelle and and her crew. Um for. A tireless effort that that is hopefully going to produce exactly what they're looking for.
Thanks, Jean, Josh.
Yeah, yeah, same same here, it's um. It's a difficult task and um Michelle, I know you. Put your heart and soul into this, so appreciate that. Um I definitely agree with Mark that it was a good idea to. Take some time and um consider um additional community feedback. And so thank you for doing that and incorporating that into the plan to the extent that you can. Um. I would say that um. It's kind of impossible to make a plan that. Everyone would unanimously say this is exactly what I would want, right, so um there is always. Compromise, so um. You can't, you know, make a hundred percent of the people a hundred percent happy, so I hope people keep that in mind when they review this um. Plan, um and you said it's will be available to download from the hot dot org, correct?
Yes, thank you, Josh, I think that's really important and the other thing I would notice, you know, this is Nahat's first plan. The plan is um has a life expectancy of about five years. So anytime during the first five years, if our conditions in town change. Or we receive, you know, information that. Wasn't included in the plan, but we decide to, we'll save it for the next. Revision because we have to update this plan every five years to the state. It gives us an opportunity and to your point, you can't, it's impossible to make it all exhaustive. So that's why the state has put these benchmarks to allow communities to update their plans every five years.
Yeah, thank you for that, and then just one final note is that um. I'd I'd encourage uh the public to take this opportunity um to get their comments and questions in. Um and I'd encourage the public to be as specific as possible um with any questions or comments, so. Um. It's a lot easier to address a specific question or comment than sort of a broad brush. Comment like, you know, why do we have to do this or that that sort of thing, so that's just uh. Some encouragement uh for the public as they um hopefully take the time to look at this thing and. Um share any last minute. Comments with the with the committee.
Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, thanks, Josh. Okay, thank you, Michelle, um. Uh we'll look forward to Friday when that's published, um. Good enough, okay, we're gonna move on, uh Josh, anything on preserving his point?
Uh I do not have anything new.
Good, um town administrator's report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, um to start with Emerald Road, Fox Hill Road Water. And Lowland Stormwater Project Updates. A little, not too much uh updates to provide because we've had some bad weather over the last. Uh week since our last Board of Selectmen meeting. I know they've made a lot of progress on Emerald Road. Uh in switching uh households that were attached to the old water main to the new water main. Um, we ran into an issue where we discovered the Valley Road School was actually attached to the old water main, so. Uh Greenwich is gonna be providing me a uh change order proposal to switch Valley Road Schools. Service to the new water main. We're also, they also ran in, they also found um. Uh that the Pond Street Water Main could use some additional work too. So they're gonna give me a little bit more information about that and a proposal if if we have the funds. Uh to potentially do the extra work while we're while we have the crews on site. Um Fox Hill Road Water Project. The bypass, I believe, is installed, it's it may not be up and running yet, they're probably waiting for uh. The warm weather to stick around. And as far as the low lowland stormwater projects go, uh Greenwich has already completed a number of their test pits. Uh it's, you know, to prepare themselves for, you know, breaking ground on that project. Um. I think they're probably gonna, I think the la- I'll get an update actually tomorrow, um. I think the Fox Hill Water Main Project is probably a two week. Project and then they'll be, you know, hoping to get into the stormwater project right after that. Again, it's all weather dependent. Um. On update on development of short term rental rules and regulations, there's a few different things going on with short term ru- uh short term rentals. Um, if uh you recall, uh the. Attorney General approved the zoning bylaw and the general bylaw. Uh late last calendar year, they were posted by the clerk in December. The zoning bylaw went into effect. Backdated back to the first hearing of the Planning Board. Uh on the proposed zoning article. And the general bylaw went into effect this week, a hundred and twenty days from that uh. The posting of the of the uh the clerk's posting of the Attorney General's approval. Uh in that last hundred and twenty days, we've been uh working on the short term. Uh the rules and regulations for those that are legal in town, the uh. Uh owner occupied. In residential districts. Uh as well as non-owner occupied uh with special permit in business districts. The. We're we're, I would say we're. I would say we're ninety percent of the way there. A lot of, a lot of what's left is putting together, um you know, informational. Documents and application documents. Um, we have, we've pretty much uh. Worked through a lot of the different details of how the regulations are going to. Uh be presented and how the process is gonna occur, uh there's. The challenge we found is that this is still very new. To a lot of communities and. There isn't a template approach, you know, that we could steal from. Some communities are um. You know, some communities allow short term rentals, whether they're owner occupied or not. Uh there's a difference there when it comes to the regulations and the things that you wanna uh that you're gonna um. Probably include in the requirements. The towns that that are similar to ours where there's non-owner occupy allowed. Uh I'm sorry, where owner occupied is allowed, uh some are, you know, very strict. Uh with their regulations and and the requirements that uh need to be met through inspections. Uh some are a little bit more relaxed. Uh so, you know, what we really tried to do was. Uh pull all that information together and see what we thought would best fit for our community. Um and we're probably on the, I don't know, Dan, what do you think, the fourth draft of those regulations?
Yeah, the third or fourth draft, right around there. And we, you know, like you said, we're just picking and choosing um the best, the best examples we're getting from other communities. And uh that's sort of what we're doing at the moment.
Um, so. We sent letter, we sent letters out, uh the other thing that we also had to uh. Work on was the Z B A special permit application. Uh for those. Non-owner occupied in business districts that are allowed under the zoning but require a special permit. So we had, so we worked with the Z B A on applying the um. You know, what was included in the bylaw, that it was approved at town meeting related to the standards uh that would need to be met. And how we wanted to present that on the application, uh and you know, what type of information they would require from an applicant. Uh, you know, that is looking for that type of license, so we've worked on that too closely with the Chair. Chairwoman Campbell, so uh I would say that's pretty much. Complete and ready to go. Um. I honestly, I think that we would, if there wasn't. You know, all these other things going on in the month of April, like getting ready for town meeting and um. The housing production plan and working on these other major projects um. That are in front of us, I think we'd probably be able to get get this done in the next two weeks. Given that we have all those other things uh happening at the same time. I, you know, I honestly would pro- project maybe by the by, you know, the last week of April. Uh hopefully, we could have something for you guys to vote on. And I assume uh since they are regulations, that we would do a similar thing like the housing production plan is doing where we would. Essentially release them for public comment. Uh for a a set time period and see if we get any comments on the on the regs. And then if uh once they are finalized, um. Our thought is that, you know, licensing for legal short term rentals. Would officially become required on the first of the new calendar year, and so essentially for the remaining. Year, uh those legal short term renters would begin the application process and the initial. Um inspection process, there's. I'm I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of requirements that um homeowners might need to bring their. Homes up to those requirements, so we want to give them time to adjust for that, um. And then, you know, they would be required to be licensed by the start of the year. Uh those are the legal ones, of course, so um. That's the general uh outlook of the regs, I don't know if if you guys have any questions on that, I have more to. Talk about related to short term rentals, but.
Yeah, the only thing, uh I I I I know Tony is gonna address the subjects that came up last week, I'll I'll wait for that, but um. While we finalize the uh rules and regulations uh and promulgate them. If there, if there is a request for zoning enforcement before that, uh we would still accept that, correct?
Yes, the I I see them as two separate. Uh two separate issues, um so. We've actually already received an enforcement request um related to a property in town that is renting. Uh so Dan and Inspection Services is are currently working on a. Letter uh that's gonna be sent to that property owner. To address the potential um zoning violation, so yeah, the the the. You know. Non-owner occupied short term rentals that are occurring, if they're occurring in a residential district. Or even in a business district and they don't have a special permit yet. Uh those are subject to zoning violations and I s- and you know, those are kind of. On a, in a separate world from the promulgations, you know, the regulation that we're working on promulgating for legal rentals. Um, so yeah, I see that, I see that kind of separate, so we will, we are accepting those and addressing those at the same time.
Okay, great. All right.
On the, on the uh. On the issue that came up at the last meeting uh regarding Mayolus, so this was a non-owner occupied. Uh you know, alleged non-owner occupied uh short term rental in a residential district, that homeowner. Uh who is to be a soon soon to be resident, actually, um. Came to the board last week and requested that the Board of Selectmen provide relief from the zoning. Uh, you know, for the summer, for for. Rentals that were scheduled or booked uh. After town meeting vote, but prior to the Attorney General's approval. Dan and I had a conversation with that homeowner uh yesterday or the day before and explained to them that. Uh number one, uh when the zoning bylaw was approved by the Attorney General. It actually gets approved back to uh the first hearing of the Planning Board, so eve- so regard, you know. Even though those bookings occurred after town meeting, they're still considered, you know, possibly considered a zoning violation. Because of that retro uh action of zoning approvals. And number two. The Board of Selectmen uh don't have any authority. Under the zoning bylaw to provide relief. Uh to, you know, anyone that is again, you know. Uh operating outside of that zoning bylaw, so. Uh we explained to them that, you know, it's not possible uh for the Board of Selectmen to do such a thing. Um and that, you know, that they are, you know, if they are non-owner occupied and they are uh, you know, renting. As short term rental, uh they were, they would be in violation of the of the zoning, um so. I think we handled that situation um as best we could. And explained to them that, you know, we would not be able to provide relief in that scenario.
Tony, I I I think everybody should understand, or at least I hope I understand it correctly. We are not the enforcement. Body, that that's the zoning board.
Correct, when it comes to zoning, zoning bylaws are voted on by town meeting. Uh require a two thirds vote and then it's the zoning enforcement officer, in our case, it's our building inspector. Uh who's, it's it's their role to enforce the zoning and then our Z B A is the appellate body. The Board of Selectmen really don't have a hand in that process. Uh so there, you know, there's no, there's no um. There's no, you don't have any authority to provide relief to a zoning, a zoning issue that was approved by the town town government.
Okay.
Yes, well, I'll just. Give a summary of all all that, so uh just for clarity, so. The law was created by town meeting vote. Um. The Board of Selectmen's, really the only role the Board of Selectmen have in the have in this process is the creation of the rules and regulations. And then enforcement is handled by the um Planning Board and C B A that comes to that, um but again, just to be clear. Um, yeah, and um but. Short term rentals in residential areas of Nahat that are non-owner occupied. Are illegal right now. So I just want to be clear about that, and then um. Quick comment on the rules and regulations right now, um the drafts we're looking at, they're pretty simple, it's short, some definitions. Some requirements of inspections and so on, um. So not really very complicated, I think, for um the Board of Selectmen's role. And another thing to keep in mind is they can evolve as. As the needs change, if there's issues that prop up that, you know, weren't anticipated or things like that. All it requires is a Board of Selectmen vote to to revise those rules rules and regulations if that if that is needed, so um. I think we're in a good position and I agree, Tony, that um we should have something in place uh in the next few weeks.
Great, thank you. Nice, Tony.
Uh, just a little add to that, if I didn't mention it, and Dan has mentioned it at previous meetings. We, the town doesn't have a database. Uh that describes whether the properties that have state licenses to short term rent. Whether they are owner occupied or non-owner occupied, we don't know. Uh so when we get an enforcement request, our next step is to. Approach the homeowner with that. Uh you know, that allegation and determine whether A, they're renting and B, they're not owner occupied. Um, so. That's the, that that's kind of how, that's why um. I don't know if that helps clear up some of some of the enforcement questions that we got at the last meeting.
Tony or Dan, let me ask you a question, is there a difference between being owner occupied and being a resident?
Um, owner occupied infers that the. Home or the dwelling is the principal residence, so. Um when you say resident, they don't have to be registered to vote here, so to speak, uh but it does have to be their principal dwelling. And uh we currently define that as being in the home for six months and a day. So I I I'm not quite sure how that meshes with being a resident, so to speak, um but the phrase we're using, the term we're using is principal. Uh residence, or primary residence, it's the same thing.
Okay. Uh Josh, uh. Uh Jean, any further comments on this?
No, thanks.
I'm sure we'll have someone in Ci- Citizens Forum, so we can. Get on to that, uh.
Before we go, before we get to Citizens Forum, I just wanted to quickly talk about the storm that's coming tonight, uh.
Go ahead, Tony, yeah.
Emergency management team, uh our D P W. Emergency management team, uh, our DPW fire police have all been, uh, meeting and. Uh, preparing for the storm that's coming tonight. It's a, it's, we have a coastal, uh, warning. Now placed on the town. Uh, our, our DPW has already, uh, pumped out. Uh, the storm, you know, storm drain system at Bear Pond, at Castle Road. We have a pump in place at Castle Road. We have a, uh, a pump in place at Bear Pond as well. Um, all of our, uh, beach entrances. Are shored up and protected, uh, so, and we'll have, uh, DPWs coming in at like five in the morning. I think we're opening our, uh, EOC at midnight tonight. If there, anyone, uh, has any non-emergencies. Uh, you know, calls, uh, inquiries, questions, you can call the EOC at seven eight one. Seven, seven, one, two, one, two, one. If you have any emergencies, dial nine one one. Um, but I, I think that, you know, we are, we're looking at, uh, about fifty mile an hour gusts out of the east. So, Short Beach will probably, will likely deal with some erosion, um. Uh, the back rocks, those areas will probably be impacted pretty hard. Uh. We luckily are, doesn't seem like we're going to be dealing with much snow, but we are going to have a decent amount of rain as well. So we're expecting some, uh, inundation of, of storm water, but are, but we're fully prepped and, uh, ready to go.
Great. That's good news. Uh, thank you, Tony.
Hey Tony, is there any fear of the causeway closing?
Um, high tide's at seven forty in the morning. Um, the tides, the, I, I don't think so because it's easterly. Uh, so it's really the, uh, parking lot side of the causeway that is going to be getting hit with the storm surge. Um, the high tide isn't that, isn't that high, but the surge is high. So I don't. Suspect that there's going to be a lot of, uh, debris or splash over. Coming from the harbor, from the channel. So it's always up to this, to the state. And if they close it, we'll put out a robocall. Um, and usually it'll just be closed for the, you know, for that couple hours during high tide. Uh, but I'm, I'm. If I had to bet on it, I would say no, given the direction of the storm.
Yeah, the high tide, the seven forty AM high tide is a nine point nine foot tide. The eight. Twenty-seven PM is a nine foot high tide. So those are not very high. So that should help us.
It is rush hour, it is rush hour, you might want to.
Now, that, you know what, Gene? Thank you for bringing that up and good point, Mark. With it being easterly, the car, not the causeway, but the rotary is exposed. Right after the bathhouse, and that could see flooding and that could be shut down. So it may be a good idea to leave early tomorrow if you're, if you're exiting town in the morning.
Oh, late, right, one or the other. Okay, great. Thank you, Tony. Thanks, uh, for the team putting, putting this all together. I saw I go past the police station way, way out of town. I saw everybody up there meeting and getting prepared and, um, that's, that's, that's a good sign. So thanks for getting ready. Uh, citizens forum.
Have you just, uh, unmute yourself if you, uh. Yeah, just say your name and address, please.
Esther Johnson, Five Ocean Street, and whoop. Can you hear me? Okay, I was on my iPad before. I'm on my iPhone now, so for some reason I, I can do it. I just wanted to thank you for talking about, um, Operation Truth Support. And thank, um, all the town employees that are really helping out on this. It, it really is a really nice project. Myself and Peg Silver and, um, Dana Sheen were at the Johnson School on Monday talking to the kids and they were excited about it. But I just, just briefly, if I could just say a couple of things, um, this. Operation Truth Support is a private nonprofit, um, out, it was started twenty years ago out of Danvers, and it's a great organization. And they send out maybe a hundred to a hundred and fifty packages a week. And so these packages go to individual, um, enlisted personnel. Um, in the Middle East, in Africa, Europe, uh, uh, you know, in the Navy on the Black Sea. And they, they request these items. So the package is small. It's a twelve inch by twelve inch by six inch deep postal package. Um, so. Those that are very, people are very generous. If they could just think that, think small in terms of small toiletries. Small shampoos, that type of thing, or if you're going to, um, donate some, um, food at the fight, to the fire station. And, um, drop off at the fire station, individual, um, packets of like ramen noodles. Everything's on there, but just think small in terms of, um, packaging it. And basically what happens is, um. Each person gets one package of food and another package of toiletries and maybe, um, a book of, uh, uh. Playing cards, et cetera. But I, I just appreciate everybody that stepped forward on this. It's really a really good project. And this Operation Truth Support, which is a private nonprofit, has sent over one million packages in twenty years. So. It's, it's, we're really proud to be doing it and helping out. So, whatever.
Okay, well, we appreciate you, Esther, and your team, uh, for participating in this. And, uh, I'm sure the community will rally around it.
Uh, they always do, and thank you. Thanks a lot, guys.
Thank you, Esther.
Yep, bye-bye.
Okay, uh, Brendan, I saw your hand up first.
Brendan, can you unmute yourself? Yes.
Brendan, Veronica Homestead, Two Summer Street. Uh, questions about the, uh, short-term rental plan. Um, is there a clear definition of what adjacent means? Like, are we talking just the house next door, the house behind, the house across the street? Or is it like the house next street over? That's, I, I was wondering if there's a clear definition what adjacent is in the, uh, short-term housing plan.
Yeah, there is a definition of owner adjacent in the zoning bylaws. I, I can't pull up at the moment, but there is a specific definition. I believe it involves. The same parcel, like, 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 like some sort of, um, uh, um. You know, a, a, above a garage or something, in addition to the dwelling, the main dwelling. So there is a definition.
Okay, so, so if they own the house next door to them, that is, they can't use the house, the property next door as a B and B? I mean, is it, is it, uh, as an Airbnb?
Uh, yeah, it's got to be the same parcel, but I'll, let me, let me look up the definition real quick as you're on. Maybe we can go to the next person and come back.
The second question is, um, you know, this more is, is such as, uh, is dealing with if they have. If they can own property adjacent to them, is, is there an upper limit on how many? Cause you know, if you can own your, if you can have your house. The house next to you, the house, house to your left, the house to your right, the house across the street, the house behind you. Um, you know, that would be, you know, five, um, uh, uh, Airbnbs that could be operated by one individual.
I don't understand the question.
Well, of the, of the, if, 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 if the owner adjacent, like, you can be, own multiple properties, like if you, there are several streets in town. Such as, um, Lodge Road, Valley Road and Emerald. The way they are, they're all parallel to each other. So if I own a house on Valley Road, can I own the house behind me that's on Emerald Road? And use as a B and B, and then the house that's to the left and to the right of me on Valley Road and the house across the street? Like, that's why I'm trying to understand adjacent. Like, you, is it also, you know, do you define a diagonal, like the house, like almost like a checkered board? You cannot, all the squares around me, can I own? Operate them.
I'm looking at the definition, and I'll read it to you. Owner adjacent, short-term rental. A residential unit offers a short-term rental, which is not the owner's principal residence, but which is located within the same dwelling and or parcel. As a principal residence. So. It's got to be on your own parcel. It can't be next door, under the adjacent parcel. But, so that, that's what an adjacent is.
Okay.
Yeah. It's pretty exclusive. I mean, I, I can't, I don't, I can't imagine how many of those. I mean, this sounds more like an ADU than a short-term rental, but. Um, that's what it is.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks Brendan. Uh, George. Sorry, George, I muted you by accident. You were already unmuted.
Thought it was.
There you go.
Roger Hovin, sixty-four Lennox Road, Nahat, Mass. Um, question about the short-term rental, non-owner occupied residential areas. You stated that the, um, the rules went to effect even before December first. I think that's when the, um, the state notified us. And we put it out to the public. Um, what is the procedure for people that are non-complying with this? You haven't explained that. I mean, I, I, I know you said the rules and regulations are coming out for the legal ones. Meaning in the business area or owner occupied, but the non-owner occupied short-term rentals in residential areas already have a, uh. No, you can't do it. So what is the plan for you guys or the planning board, if you can speak for them? I don't know. Uh, the process they, we, being a, say a neighbor that puts in a complaint, what's the timeframe and what, what does the town or the. Inspection services are going to do to make them stop this?
Right, um, so yes, so on the zoning side, it goes back to that earlier date. And it's been illegal since then, uh, since it was approved, uh, and before. And so the. Uh. If we get an enforcement request from a resident, it goes to inspectional services for it to, to be processed. The, the building inspector will then reach out to the property owner. Within, I believe, Dan, is it fourteen days is the requirement?
Wayne has fourteen days to respond to the enforcement request. So within those fourteen days, he would theoretically reach out to the. Alleged short-term rental operator and ask them to present, present any evidence that says they're, they're not, not owner occupied. So it gives them a chance to rebut the allegation.
And if they are?
Well, then if they are, then, 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 well, first of all, we can't speak for Wayne. I would expect Wayne to issue a cease and desist. Um, and then the, the, the homeowner, the short-term operator would either comply, or they have a right to appeal to the ZBA. Uh, um, and the ZBA, I want to say the appeal period is thirty days. It might be off, but somewhere around there. And the ZBA has a certain amount of time to hold a hearing and come up with a decision after that.
And they could, then they could, they could appeal the ZBAs through the appellate court too, couldn't they?
The Superior Court or Land Court, yes.
Will we, um, fineing them for not complying? I, I still.
The way, not yet. The, the way the fine structure works is the first violation is a warning. The second violation, I think, is twenty-five dollars, and it goes to fifty, then a hundred, and three hundred, which is a statutory limit for violations.
Per day.
Per day, per day, yeah. Each day's a new violation.
Uh huh. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, George. Sheila, are you still on? You sent a message. Don't, Sheila's sent a message and saying she would like to comment, but I don't see her on here anymore. So I'm just going to go, uh, to the next person with their hand raised is, uh, Jeff Lewis. I'm just going in order. Uh, what's on my screen? Jeff, if you want to unmute, announce your name and address, please.
Uh, Jeff Lewis, Six Elsworth Road. This is a follow-up to George's question. If I was to do a scenario, this person on Mayolus. What if they say, I'm guilty, but I have circumstances. I have these bookings already committed, and I know I'm in violation. Can you fine me for these? Uh, can I get these people in? Pay the fine, and I won't do it again. And if it's, what is it per incident? Because as if I, on the last meeting, I thought I heard them say there were multiple bookings. Um, going up to the end of the year. So would there be multiple fines or violations? First offense, second offense, third offense, and then potential loss of license for anything beyond. I, I don't know the rules. Maybe they haven't been established yet. That's my question. I hope I voiced it correctly. Is there, is there a remediation part in place?
I think what, uh, top council, uh, uh, fine structure, uh, allows, allows the town to find up to. Um, three hundred dollars per day. Uh, I guess the question that, that is interesting, Jeff. Is there a way to, um, get their license removed from the town of Nahat, uh, operating in the town of Nahat?
Yeah, there is. It's a twofold thing. One, I, I made a mistake. I booked these revenues. But I don't want to disappoint the people, and I'll pay the fine, and I won't do it again. Uh, and if they do it again, well then, is there a method for saying, well, you've already got three violations, you know, three strikes you all type scenario? So it's, uh, two, two remedies.
In order to, in order to attempt to revoke the state registration, we would need some form of a court order, probably from. Um, you know, Salem Superior or at least Lynn District. So that wouldn't be something we can do on our own. We'd need a judge to sign off on that sort of thing. Um, so I, I hope that answers your question in terms of revoking the state license.
Uh, I guess just in, in the town license, I guess for, for operating. A, a non-operator, owner-operator license. But in this particular person's case, I thought I heard them say that they were actually going to be in the process of moving in. And it would become an owner-operated.
Well, I think it would be, I don't think it would be short-term at all at that point. I think they would just live there full-time and not operate. But the thing is, it's a hypothetical. Um, s- so, um. They would have their appeal rights. I don't think they made admissions last week or two weeks ago. Uh, but they, I, I've heard nothing that for, that would have them forsake their appeal rights under the statute. So they can still. Um, exert those and then go from there. And the first violation is a warning. We can't go right to three hundred dollars. I think for three hundred is the fourth or fifth stage. But in all time, in, in, in all these, I've been town council, it's never actually come up in terms of actually issuing a, a fine. So hopefully it won't come up here. These, this, this, uh, couple of homeowners have been very cooperative. So I don't expect much of a problem.
Of course, um, if it's a known, non-owner occupied, um, short-term rental. They wouldn't be registered with the town because it would be illegal in the first place. So, um.
Hey Dan, a crazy question. Could, could somebody work the, the fines against the bookings?
You know, I thought about, if, if, you know, if, if they wanted, so, so, yes, they could, uh, they could to some degree. At some point, we can get a court, we, well, we should be able to get a court to issue a court order. But ordering them to cease and desist, and then it becomes a police matter. They don't comply with the order. We're a long way from that. Hopefully we'll never have to get there. But.
The other thing, if it becomes, um, a problem, we can always adjust the fine schedule. Uh, that can be done by the Board of Selectmen, right?
Well, no, because it's a, it's a bylaw and, and the statutes.
The fine, the fine structure is a bylaw?
Yeah, it's part of.
It's a, it's a police bylaw, correct?
Yes, exactly. And actually, the maximum is set by statute. Three hundred dollars is the maximum we can charge, and that should change.
That's right. It's, yeah, it's like a, it's like dog licensing. It's set by statute, I think, by state statute, right? Right? Okay.
Okay, I'm, I'm happy.
Thanks, Jeff.
Michelle.
Chocapano, twenty-nine Ocean Street. In terms of the non-owner occupied property. In terms of the non-owner occupied properties, once a enforcement order is submitted, does, when or does complainant receive? You said it take, you said the building inspector has fourteen days to do the review, contact the homeowner, render a decision. The decision goes to the prop, the non-owner occupied property owner. But what does, when or does the complainant receive a response or an update?
The fourteen days is the time period.
So fourteen days, okay.
Yeah, the complaint should receive a response. Now, the remedy is that if they don't receive a response within fourteen days, then they petition a select...
I'm sorry, say that again, Dan? If the complainant doesn't receive response within fourteen days, what is the action?
They go to the selectmen and ask for the same relief as...
Okay, then it's another, an order of enforcement to the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, you, yeah.
Okay, and is it also a fourteen day? Does it go back to the building department for them? Or do the Board of Selectmen hire an outside person to review?
I believe that's their discretion, but my understanding was that the selectmen would either order this, the, well, they can't really order. Would direct to the building inspector to issue a decision. But this has never come up, so...
I know, I know. We're charting on, we're on uncharted waters. I'm fine with that. I'm just trying to understand the, the process. And certainly we're testing it as well, right, to see...
Well, this request for enforcement is nothing new. They, they've come down a few times a year. It's the idea that Wayne doesn't answer timely. And then it goes, I've never seen one go to the selectman, but that would be the next step if Wayne doesn't respond. But, but Wayne's pretty good with this stuff, he's done it many times.
Okay.
Michelle, he has up to fourteen days, so it can be one day too.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I understand that. So then, after the first request for enforcement, then what happens if there's a second request for enforcement? Then, you know, the first quest is a warning, the second quest is a fine. And then there's, there's another fine after the third request, right? When?
Right.
What happens on the fourth request? That's...
I will say, I think the first is a warning, the second is twenty-five dollars per day, the third is fifty, the fourth is a hundred, I believe. And then it goes to the ultimate three hundred.
So after three hundred, because you said it's per day, they're charged?
Yeah.
So if they're charged per day, when does it stop?
When the short-term rent...
Like, how is the, how are the dates determined? When the first fine starts on the first, that second enforcement? And then when does the, when did the number of days stop? Right? So if you issue the first twenty-five dollars, it's twenty-five dollars per day. So day one, you have twenty-five dollars, one's day X. How's that determined?
Do they, Dan, do they accumulate charges when there's no renter there? Or is it only per day?
I don't see how that could... If it's a weekend, then that'll be two days.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. So it's based on the term of stay? Okay, perfect. And then how are you collecting the penalties? Are you sending them a notice to pay or are you putting them on their taxes?
I don't, I don't know, to be honest with you. Again, I've never come across, we've never actually had to issue a fine. I don't think you could put on the taxes, because I think the statutes are pretty clear in terms of taxation. That's probably a good question for Sheila. But we haven't come across that yet, Michelle, to be honest. I would be surprised if we can put a...
You know, Dan, I think you're right. I don't think you, you could put it on the taxes. I mean, you may be, you may be able to put a lien on their property at some point.
Well, that was my next question. Can you put a lien on their property? And then the other is, are you charging interest rate for unpaid fees?
Well, if there was a lien, then it would be interest rates, I would believe.
Okay, maximum allowed where applicable.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Michelle, those are all, those are all great questions. I, I'm just gonna add like some fine print to the conversation that they are, you know, hypothetical situations and...
Yes, yes.
Yet, so that's Dan's best guess or best, you know, and he's probably right. Dan's rarely wrong, but...
Yeah, sure.
Please give us the opportunity to work through that. And I think that now that we have this template letter, you know, this was our first enforcement request. Now that we have this template letter, you know, I think that Wayne will be able to kind of respond in a faster timeframe from when we get requests.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you gentlemen.
Thanks.
Jody Groll, did you have something you wanted to say earlier? You were unmuted, but your hand wasn't up, so it wasn't clear.
Yes, Jody Groll, sixty-five A Bass Point Road. A question, assuming the HPP is finalized, submitted to the state and approved, what person will be the Nahat housing jar? I mean, if we submit this plan, it has a lot of recommendations. Who's going to, you know, pick it up and run with the ball?
Well, wait.
Is it the Board of Selectmen? I know Tony doesn't want to say it's the town administrator. Is it the...
No, Tony would be responsible.
Planning, planning board?
Well, I, I think all of that is...
Or do we hire a town planner?
Jody, I think the answer to that question is the administration of it would be through the town administrator. Policy-related issues related to the housing production plan would be through the Board of Selectmen and the planning board. Certainly, because we both have to approve the plan. But to answer your question, I believe, would be the, the administration of the plan would be initiated by the town administrator. And any policy-related issues related to it would be the, probably between the Board of Selectmen and the planning board.
As an example, if a developer wants to come in and has a friendly forty B proposal, he goes to the town administrator and then, then what happens?
I think in order for the town to participate in a friendly forty B, it may require a town meeting vote. There would have to be an agreement, a development agreement between the proposed developer and the town.
I, I understand that, but what I'm trying to find out is basically who's in charge and who does somebody, who, who, someone who wants to build affordable housing, who do they deal with in the town?
They would start with the town administrator.
And Tony, where would they go from there?
I mean, I would bring, again, it's a hypothetical. I would, I would imagine my next stop would be the Board of Selectmen, the planning board. You know, I, I think there's a lot of steps. I don't, I don't know.
I, I guess what I'm saying is if we're submitting a plan to the state that we want to do certain things to increase affordable housing and all of a sudden they approve of it and then we get a people that want to build affordable housing, we have to think ahead of, okay, now what do we do?
Are you suggesting a forty B, Jody?
Pardon?
Are you suggesting a forty B project?
A friendly forty D.
Well, that first goes to the state, to one or, one or three bodies in the state. And the state will reach out to town to determine what the needs are and whatnot. So it'd be quite a...
Let, let's say a homeowner in Nahat wants to build an ADU and in order to get it approved, he says, "I'll make that a deeded affordable housing unit." Who do they go to?
Well, ADUs is a whole different matter.
Yeah, ADUs are not affordable housing, totally different. Not the same thing.
Pardon?
ADUs is not affordable housing. Those are two apples and oranges, two different things.
The, the whole property would have to be deeded affordable, not just the ADU, I believe.
Okay, maybe that was a bad example. Somebody wants to convert their single-family home to a four-unit home and make one of them affordable housing. So it would be one unit out of four would be affordable housing. Who do they go to? Who do they talk to?
They would have to go through the state first.
They start with the state. And the state contacts the town.
To... To what? Get a...
They, they receive approval from the state after the state does its own analysis. And then it goes to the, then it goes to the, I think it actually goes to the ZBA. I think they have a statement.
Well, I think, Dan, what would happen is they go to the state. The state would either approve it or not, saying that you are eligible to be a forty B developer. And by that eligibility, you can now bypass the town zoning bylaws. You know, that's something that is approved by the state, I believe.
Right, but it's, the town's heavily involved in that. It's not, it's just the state, they, they seek out, they reach out to the town.
Yeah, as long as it's within reason, I believe. They can't just put a fifty-story building up on a five-thousand-square-foot piece of property, but...
The point I'm trying to make is like some towns have a town planner. We don't have a town planner. And if somebody wants to come in and get information and consider building affordable housing in Nahat, who is, who or what board, what committee do they go to?
Again, they go to the state first.
So they wouldn't come to the town, they go to the state?
Well, my, my understanding is they would file to a thought Town of Nahat zoning board of appeal because everything is zoned, single-family basically, so that they would, they would go and look for, try to get a comprehensive permit. I believe it has, what they want to do has to be rejected by the ZBA. Then it goes to the state.
Well, if we, you know, another aspect here, Jody, is that if, if we were to file the housing production plan with the state and it get approved, it puts us, it either gives us, you know, immediate temporary safe harbor or should we accomplish a couple extra goals after it's approved? We get temporary safe harbor. So it wouldn't, that would be an element of review at the state level.
Okay, I'm, I'm reading from the draft report. I do not have a copy of the present report. And it indicated that one of the recommendations is we try to get into safe harbor by filing the HPP and then filing the HPP and in the first calendar year, the town would have to create eight affordable housing units. And then the next year, I don't know what the number is, but it might be eight, it might be ten. But, so in that first year, someone says, "Well, gee, I, I have a project I'd like to be considered and it'll have the affordable housing units." Who do they go to?
Or I think it's, it's not just units, it's also an advancement on the glam can count towards that as well.
I, I understand that there, it's complicated, but who's in charge? Is it the Board of Selectmen? Is it the town administrator? Is it the planning board? Is it the zoning board of appeals? If this plan is approved?
I think I, yes, the administrative part of it would start with the town administrator. If they're...
If we, if we have safe harbor, it's gonna go through the permitting process and work through those steps. And if we don't have safe harbor, it's gonna work through those steps. If the question, you know, if you're asking if the Board of Selectmen or the town administrator have the, you know, ability to approve or deny a building permit for a proposed development, we don't.
Don't you have to do the eight units before you get safe harbor? Not just submitting the HPP?
We, well, there's different, there's, there's a number of different elements that can help you get different amounts of temporary safe harbor.
Okay, I, I can, I can cut this short. And all, all, the point I'm trying to make is once the plan gets submitted and approved, the town has to be ready to do whatever is necessary to comply with the plan.
Yes. But the risk, the risk of a forty B development isn't any better without the plan.
Well, it's worse without the plan. Without, without the plan, at least we have some level of safe harbor with the plan. Without the plan, we have no level of safety.
But I, and I'm not claiming that there's some imminent risk. I just, you know, based on the question you asked, Jody, yes, we do need to be ready, but we, we also, that's what we're trying to do right now. Right now, we're not ready at all. And that's, this is one of the things that helped the town prepare for that, should it come up.
I, okay, I, I, I don't want to belabor it. I'm assuming the plan is gonna be submitted, the state's going to approve it and then, okay, great, we have an approved HPP, I want...
Okay. Let's, let's move that conversation to tomorrow night's meeting, if that's okay.
And I'll try to make it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Candace?
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, I'll make this fast.
Just your name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, Candace Cahill, twenty Rollins Avenue. I hadn't heard any discussion, so I'm sure there wasn't tonight, but what's the update on Coast Guard housing and the three homes that are still there? I know that there were, Dan was going to court and then something was pushed back and where are we with that?
Dan's going to court and it's getting pushed back.
Yeah, we, there are three, three Tennessees left. We're gonna trial on April twenty-fourth regarding Castle Road. We already had a trial regarding one on Goddard, I think it's eight Goddard, I might have the number wrong, closest to the golf course. There's some post-trial hearings coming up and we actually have some promise with regard to the third tenancy in terms of finding a new unit. So we're trying to exercise that at the moment. So it's, it's progressing, but the courts take time and we're doing all we can.
So, just to belabor this point, two years ago, the town voted to sell them all. Two years later, three people, three tenants are not leaving and we have to just keep going to court and go through this two-year or forever process to get them...
We are landlord like any other landlord. We have to go through the process with, for holdover tenants, like any other landlord. So, yeah, yes, that's the answer and it's unfortunate, but we've done our best to, to amicably resolve the issues. It hasn't been very successful, as you can tell. But what has been successful is that, remember, we have nine other tenants that we actually were able to move on and vacate the property without having to go through this process, but...
So I guess, from a financial perspective, there's three homes that are still there that we're going to at some point have to bring back the company to dig up the oil wells that are still there to level the properties. Correct? So we'll have to bring again. So somebody has figured out what the costs are for that, what the rent is that has been collected or not collected? All of that money is available somewhere for residents to see what, what's the plan like?
Well, we won't know the exact cost, we won't know the exact cost of that until we actually procure for it. You know, for that, for that, the additional demolition, as you mentioned. So it's hard to... Um, you know, for that, for that, the additional demolition, as you mentioned, so it's hard to we can, we can forecast it, but you don't know the exact until you actually go to procure that, that work. Like we, it's kind of what we went through when we went to, when we procured the nine, you know, it came in way higher than expected. So it's hard to put a number on it, um, until you actually do it.
So do we have those kind of informal soft numbers, a budget someplace, proposed budget for what the costs are gonna be, what the amount of money is that we've been paying for lawyers? I'm just very curious that this just has gone on and on. And there's a, a significant amount of money that's being spent on this initiative and, and what, what happens at the end of the.
I mean, we're, we're keeping track of it, Candace, and I, I hear what you're saying. You're not the only one that is asking that question. Or, you know, if I read between the lines, feels the same way. Um, unfortunately, uh, that information is, for lack of a better term, irrelevant in housing court. It doesn't make a difference in the legal process that we're going through. Trust me, we've tried to make the argument, but it doesn't, it actually doesn't, it doesn't help us in any.
Yeah.
In the.
Tony, I, I asked you that question on the stand in front of Judge Del Portone. He said, that's not, that's real, it's irrelevant. You were exactly right. That's exactly what he said, so. That's unfortunate, but.
One thing we, one thing we do know is we probably have a pretty good handle now that we've taken down nine of them. Uh, what to expect in the last three and what the general cost should be associated with removing them. Uh, based on the nine that we just took down.
I also think we have, we have a, uh, a case to make to, um, the IGO related to sole source procurement. And we might be able to, you know, work with the same contractor who just went through nine other units, knows what they're getting into, can, you know, accurately, um, forecast, you know, or present a price. We might be able to save some dollars that way. Um, but it would require approval from the inspector general.
But, um, just Candace, um, just so you know, the Board of Selectmen and Tony and Dan are doing everything possible to, um, vacate those properties. Um, but there are legal limitations that, um, that are, are drawing out this process, um, as you pointed out, into a lengthy process, but it's not for a lack of effort on, on our parts.
I don't think there's anything wrong with being a little more transparent. And I know you say that.
I don't like, I don't like when people say we're not transparent. What, what is it you want to know?
Okay, let's see. Have they all paid rent for the last two years? How much is the rent? Where is that money? How much is it gonna cost? What's the soft number? When you figure out, we already did nine of these. What is the budget supposedly then to bring them back? There must be, I've managed big budgets. I'm sure, I know you judge too. Tony, you do. You have to somewhere have these numbers penciled in somewhere to have a rough idea that, say, next month, we get approval to do this, so they move out. So, what's the cost?
I think that was a number of questions. Would, would you be able to write those down and email them? I'd get them for you. It's time to pull those off, stuff for heads, of course.
Yeah, um.
I will write them down and spit them.
Thanks, that, that would help.
I don't know how to, uh, Dan, shut me up. If, if you need to, um, I think you're not getting, a lot of our comments are reserved, Candace, because retaliation or any form of retaliation, like in a public meeting like this, could, could start our entire legal process over. And so we're very reserved about how we comment about what's going on for the better of the community, because we're trying to get through this process as fast as possible. Um, I, I think it's, I don't, you know, as far as rent goes, uh, you know, two of the three uh, have been paying what's called an occupancy fee, uh, throughout this process. One of them hasn't been paying rent. Uh, one of the units, uh, hasn't been paying rent. Um, and, you know, that's a factor of our uh, litigation.
Yes, Tony, we should probably just cap it. We should just cap it at that. Look out for, you said, uh, us getting some sort of, I don't want to get an email tomorrow from their attorney.
I understand.
That's why, that's why this session is always taking an executive session. And it's not because we don't want to be transparent. It's because we don't want to expose our legal position on anything.
And I understand, but as a, as a resident and somebody that actively participates in these calls, there's still a certain vagueness to what's happening with the processes, so.
Yeah, intentionally, yeah, intentionally. Because we can't expose it. We're in litigation. We can't be talking about that litigation in public.
Yeah.
It's frustrating for us. It is frustrating for the public not to have that information, but that's the nature of a legal system.
All right. Is that, Candace, did you have anything else? Any other questions related to that or?
Um, no, I'm just, uh, the Affordable Housing Production Plan is going to be released on Friday online, so everyone can access it.
Yes. There'll be a red line version and a clean version.
Okay, great.
But you'll be able to see how it changed from the last version.
Okay.
All right. I see a five nine nine four zero zero six number coming off of mute. Is that intentional? Can you state your name and address?
Yes, hi, this is Debbie Vander Size. I'm not a dinosaur, but I don't know why my iPad does not want to zoom in. So yes, I, I would like to make a comment and ask a question, please.
Say your address as well.
Three sixty eight Nahat Road.
Okay.
Okay, so earlier during the discussion on the short-term rentals in Nahat and the definition provided, which stated that if somebody's gonna do this, they need to either live, um, in the unit or on the property, something occurred to me. So we have all this housing stuff going on or things will be happening in the future with the housing committee looking at our options for, you know, affordable housing and MBTA, um, rezoning. And it occurs to me that with the MBTA rezoning, we've discussed how people could either add new units or make in-laws or even maybe make a third, third story on their house or put another, um, housing unit on their property. And I'm just wondering what, after doing this and engaging in this process, which theoretically will be legal after the town defines what the parameters of the rezoning is, what is to stop anybody from taking those units that theoretically would be designed to help comply with the MBTA housing law? And to just say, no, not gonna do it. I'm gonna make these short-term rentals, you know? I've got my structure on my property. I've got my third floor and I'm gonna rent everything out. So I was just curious if this has crossed your mind.
Uh, let me jump in here. It, 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 of course, it has, um, there, there, but, um, the three A, MBTA three A zoning, not doesn't have to come into compliance into what, twenty twenty-five, twenty, I think?
Correct.
Um, it's certainly something that we're going to have to discuss. And certainly, uh, it worked towards, it's not on our table now. Um, it won't be for a while. I'm sure the Attorney General in the, in the Massachusetts Superior Court is going to have something to say about that. So, I mean, it, that's just a lot of hypotheticals. I didn't even want to get into it at this point.
I, I would say that, uh, to add to that, so for forty B, uh, you cannot, if, with a forty B property, an affordable property or anything counting towards SHI, uh, there, there's going to be a deed restriction that would prevent that those housing units to be used as short-term rentals.
Yeah, but I was talking, I was talking about affordable housing. I was talking about the MBTA rezoning law.
I got you. Let me, let me keep going. I, I'm, I, I assume that we would have the ability if we wanted to, to include something like that in the zoning law for MBTA, uh, three A compliance. But that's something, like Mark said, we'll discuss over the next summer as we go through the planning process of that. I think, I would imagine that the state wouldn't have a problem with that. I've been surprised, but, um, the effort of MBTA is to, is not to enhance short-term renting. So I, I could, I think we'd probably be able to, uh, include something like that. I, I don't know. We'd have to look at it.
Yeah, and then there's the whole issue of, okay, so what if the property changes hands? Somebody sells their house and then are back to square A? They think they're buying a house where they can do what they want with all their units they're purchasing. I, I realize, we'll, we'll deal with that when we get to it, but I think it's interesting to consider these, these aspects of all these laws and what kind of impact they're gonna have on our town.
Well, I mean, in those scenarios, they would have to be, if, for, in order for it to be a legal short-term rental, it would have to be owner occupied if it's in a residential district.
Right, but my point is with the rezoning for the MBTA law to comply, um, you know, the, the owner has a greater opportunity to stay there because all of a sudden he can build a structure on his property that he can't build today because of new zoning laws. So that's why I'm saying the challenge could come before the town to say, well, wait a minute, we, you know, this law was designed to make more housing accessible so people can take public transportation. But in the meantime, we've got these expanded units and all of a sudden, people are like, no, not gonna do it. I'm gonna do short-term rentals instead. That's much more.
I mean, that's assuming that our MBTA zoning promotes some sort of uh, increase in multifamily units that aren't already in existence. So I would put a, I would say, let's pin it and we'll work through that this summer in the planning process.
Okay, I don't envy your job, just bringing it up though.
Uh, George?
Yeah, George Mahoven, sixty-four Lennox Road, Nahat, Mass. Question on the short-term rentals. How does a citizen of the town start the, um, procedure to do a request for someone that's not complying? Well, would you have to fill out a form? Do you just call the building inspector? You have to send a letter? How does that work?
There's a form at the town, at, at town hall. Go see, uh, KK, uh, Mary Lowe. And there's a, uh, request for zoning enforcement form that you can fill out.
Okay, it's not on the computer. It's on, you gotta go to town hall.
It might be on the computer. Yeah, I think it's on the computer.
It's on, it's on the website. I thought I sent, I thought I sent you the link to George the other.
I, I don't know if you did, and I, I'll have to check, um, Tony, I'm not really sure. I know a couple of people have asked me, um, how do you go about all this? And I was like, I don't know, but I think the first thing is you need to send a letter to the, um, zoning people, I, I would imagine Mr. Wilson, um, to start the thing. So, uh, again, I didn't know if there was a form. I, I think you did mention something like that, but I wasn't quite sure. So I just wanted to.
No, for anyone, for anyone that's pay, you know, listening in or if they reach out to you, George, if you go to nahat.org and in the top right corner, there's a search bar, and if you search the word enforcement, uh, it'll come up.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Welcome. Sheila, I see you're back on. Do you still have a question? Uh, if not, that's it, uh, as far as. Hope she's. All right, Sheila, can you?
Is it Susan? Are you talking?
No, I was talking to Sheila, but Susan, if you have, if, hold on a second, Susan. It seems like Sheila's coming.
Okay.
On. Or Sheila, while you figure that out, I'll have Susan go first. Susan, again, if you could just, um, state your name and address.
Yep, sure. Susan Casavio, sixty-five Millis Road. Um, I just had a, um, everyone's done a great job, um, tonight on the short-term rental issue. Um, I just want to, um, clarify, um, again on what George started to talk about in the event that the, um, that, that the homeowner goes through with the, with the rentals. You don't call the police, you file a form, you. I mean.
File, yeah, Susan, you file a, um, request for zoning enforcement. You can do that either get the form online or go to town hall, you fill it out there. And then the zoning enforcement officer has within fourteen days to respond.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Sheila? Uh, we can see you, we can't hear you, but do you want to type your question in, into the chat and I can read it? Also, if you can type in your address too, I'll announce that for the record.
Okay, uh, is there anybody else, Tony?
No, just waiting for Sheila to type that question in.
I think she could follow up with you tomorrow too, if that's, she's having a problem. Keep everybody hanging here.
Uh, hard to read, um, but I think She- Sheila, Sheila Hamilton, who's a town assessor, seventeen Keeney Ave, uh, is saying that she has the addresses for billing for personal property STRs, I think, is what she, it's coming in a little scrambled. I'm not sure. I'll follow up with Sheila tomorrow. I think we, we sent a letter out to everyone already, Sheila. Um, so I'll, I'll follow up with you tomorrow.
Okay, Josh, Jean, any, any further questions here?
No, I'm good.
Okay, any motion to adjourn?
I move that the Board of Selectmen adjourn.
Second.
This is made and seconded, all in favor?
Jean Cante, I.
Mark Kell and I. Good night, everybody.